Folks, thank you very much. Welcome to the Red Hook Town Board Meeting of Wednesday, June 25, 2025. May I ask you to join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all very much. This is the second meeting of the month. The first meeting, we did not do a supervisor's report and a clerk's report, so that's been added to the agenda for tonight. For the folks at home, if you want to see what we'll be discussing, Eric, you've panned over. Could you pan over to the screen, please, so they can take a look? We're going to start out with an application for large assembly. The Red Hook Pool is having a competition in the first week of August, and we have Mary Herron with us to discuss what that event is like and preparations underway, so that we can make a decision on the application. We have our engineer here for several things this evening. One is to talk about the pre-construction work for the bridge to Cooking Ham Trails from Red Hook Park. So a reminder, folks, we've created these great trails. They're almost all connected from one village to another. There are two voids. The first one is this bridge, which will get you from Cooking Ham Trail to Red Hook Park. The second void is crossing 9G up near Bard to connect to the Tivoli Bay Trails there. So we'll be looking at a task order for pre-construction work survey and so on and so forth. Tonight, we are going to reward the bid for the community solar project. Again, speaking of Cooking Ham, as a reminder to everybody, because I see a lot of misinformation out there on social media, we have permanently protected all of the active farmland on both sides of the road on Cooking Ham. There was a small area, a few acres, that were mined nearly a century ago that are close to the pond, Red Hook Park, in the western portion that we are going to put solar on. There is basically no topsoil left in this area. We're talking about two or three acres that the solar panels will be in, and we will hear more about that and the impacts. Discussion, it's that time of the year again, although throughout the year, we apply for grants. The state has consolidated many of the grant opportunities to what's referred to as a CFA or Consolidated Funding Application. That is typically grants that need to be in by the end of July, so today, at the end of June, we'll be discussing some of those potential applications so that we can make applications next month. There is some equipment that's being recommended for the water tank and water service. We have a couple of quick appointments to do in our reorg. We need to establish a town website privacy policy, and so we're taking a look at some examples there. And then finalize the police services agreement. We have some ideas there of what we might do for the 2025 year. Correspondence, department, board, and committee reports. And so we'll start off with the supervisor's report. This is a snapshot, folks. Again, as a reminder, this is at a moment in time. This is for the end of May, 2025. We started out with an opening balance of $11,144,000. We had receipts of 238 roughly, dispersments of $424,000. We ended with just under $11 million. There are some budget amendments that are proposed by our bookkeeper, Ann Conway. You have your variance reports. Again, as a reminder, folks, all of these documents are available at least 24 hours in advance. If you sign up for notifications, you will have the excitement of having all, tonight, only 197 pages sent to you where you can get all the detail. Any questions, folks? No? Okay. Is there a motion to accept the supervisor's report? Thank you, Mr. Herron. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Julia. All in favor?
Aye.
We also have the clerk's report for the month.
Okay.
Do you kindly?
Town clerk's report. I'm going to do some counts now about the town clerk's office. Month of May 1st to May 31st, 2025, we served 171 people at the window, 94 notaries. There were 16 open foils. We did 10 marriage licenses plus two one-day officiants. We did 29 death and marriage certificate copies and 33 renewals for dog license and three brand-new dog licenses. We also had two RFPs and, including a rebid, 16 handicap placards and 11 Decals fishing license. So the town clerk's report for the period of May 31st to May 31st, 2025, total local shares remitted, $7,749.99. Amount paid to New York State Agriculture and Markets for the spay neuter program, $38. Amount paid to New York State Department of Health for marriage licenses, $225. Amount paid to New York State Environmental Conservation for hunting and fishing license, $391.01. Total state, county, and local revenues, $8,404 total. And then I have vouchers. Certified that vouchers numbered 334838 totaling $33,560. I'm sorry, I have these numbers wrong. Where is it?
334838.
Oh, yeah, here it is. Yeah, I wrote the wrong thing. Certified that vouchers numbered 33438 to 33565, processed in the month of May, 2025, are an accurate reporting of the abstracts approved for payment by the town board.
Very good. Is there a motion to accept the clerk's report?
Some.
Second. Thank you very much. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so announcements. Only a couple. Once again, it's that time of year. We will be doing, in fact, we've already done the mailing to folks in town who, we believe, may qualify for the Rebuilding Together program. If you've watched previous meetings, this is a great not-for-profit with a lot of local volunteers. Central Hudson was here at our project maybe two months ago over in Red Hook Estates. Folks who need repairs, oftentimes repairs that go towards accessibility, handrails, so on and so forth, roof, you know, anything that's beyond not only their financial means but also their physical capabilities. We did a mailer out of my office last year. They were looking for a project here. They had five applications. We've done another one, another mailer, this month. If you, for some reason, are watching at home or here in the audience and did not receive one and think that you may be eligible, there are income guidelines, and you need to live in either Duchess or Ulster County. Please go on our website or go on the Rebuilding Together's website to get more information. It's a wonderful program, oftentimes it helps seniors in the communities that they live in and helps them stay there. Okay, that's all I have. The last thing I would say is that we had a very successful shred day, finally. We got through all of our seven community events here, and without fail, it ran down every single one of them, including shred day, but most of the rain held off until the end. Look for a mailer again at the beginning of the year with all these events. We did get calls from people afterwards wondering when it was happening. So that's all I've got for announcements. Anybody else? No? Okay, very good. Public comments, we can take about 15 minutes of public comments. We've got a long agenda. Linda, if you'd be kind enough to come up and just state your name for the record, please?
Linda Kealan. I looked over the Cooking Ham pathway, and there was a blanket statement that no motorized vehicle should be allowed. However, it doesn't take into consideration handicap people using motorized wheelchairs or other equipment. And so that should state, I feel, the specific things that should not be on there, like these electric bikes, anything going more than five miles per hour. It should be rewritten. And the other thing, it should have some benches where people can sit when you're traveling along, especially if you're elderly, you need to sit. You also need trees so that there's shade for people. And when you do benches, you need to have wheelchair accessibility on both sides.
Yeah, we've struggled with that, Linda. The problem is, it's a farm. It's going to be sold as a farm, so the bench that is, and to remind people, there are only certain portions of the trails that will be on property we own. Other portions of the trails will be on property that the farmer owns. And so we don't want to have a bench in there that's going to become an obstacle. Okay? So we thought about that carefully. It would be great to have benches there, but again, as a reminder, once we get this bridge built, there'll be lots of benches.
How much of the property does the town own along the path there?
Basically, what's going to go to the farmer is north of Willow.
Once it's transferred, we won't own the property under the trail. We'll have an easement.
We will still maintain it. We'll own the access. It's a public access.
Is it paid tax law?
No, it's not. It's doned us. It's not paid.
And get rents and...
And it has.
Yeah.
And it has. Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you, Linda.
That's my statement. Change it.
Anyone else before we get started? Thank you very much. Mary, are you ready?
I'm ready.
Okay, why don't, do you want to just start out and tell us what this event, yeah, what you're doing?
Absolutely. I'm Mary Herron. I am the head coach of the Red Hook Sea Raiders. It's a summer program, part of the Duchess Ulster Swim Organization or DUSO. There are eight teams total that are in the league. Each team has about 100 between 100 and 200 swimmers that participate in the programs, and each year, a team has to host. Typically, the Ulsters County pools or side of the teams go to the Ulster County pool. Last year, with the drain broken, we weren't sure if that was going to happen, so they pivoted to Duchess County, and Red Hook was first up. So we are hosting all eight teams. About 800 families will be in town on August 2nd. We've done it before. This is, we did it seven years ago. It's a pretty well-oiled machine. We have tents that we set up behind the tennis courts for all the teams, so they have shade. Summer safe-to-be. The events that happen inside the pool, when we are swimming in the pool, there's only six swimmers in the pool at the time. We have lifeguards that staff the pool, a first aid station that's in the pool. Really, we have spectators benches, but once a child swims, then the spectators typically go back to the tent to be with their families and their team. I'm trying to think of what else. We have a few vendors that are coming just to help with feeding all of those people because hungry swimmers don't make great swimmers or hungry people. And then we've been working on the parking situation, so we will all overflow, so we have a majority of the parking happening on the Red Hook Pool property. We do have a couple of spots that we would like to take on the backside behind the tennis courts for the swim officials who are in charge of making sure that all swims are done legally, so they will get those spots behind there. And then we will block off, I believe it was 30 spots, we allowed four, out of the 64 patrons that would still want to use the Red Hook Park that day. We do have, we spoke with the police department and the fire department, so both are aware of the event. Because Linden Avenue is considered a county road, the Red Hook PD cannot, I don't want to say cannot, but is aware of the event but won't man the road. But we have many first responders on the team who will be directing traffic for us. They'll have to hide those vests and/or t-shirts on in order to direct traffic. Traffic will really only be from the hours of 6:30 to 7:30 because warmups start at 7:30, then traffic should really cease for most of the day. And then we'll have more traffic again at the end of the meet, which, as long as there's no rain delays, should end around 4 o'clock, so really from 4 to 5, we'll have traffic again on Linden Avenue. But again, we'll have people directing traffic. Our goal is to have the entrance come in, go through the loop of the Red Hook Park. Parents be able to drop their kids and stuff off right by the tennis courts so they can bring it back to the tents. Then if there's no parking left in the Red Hook area, then they'll go out and make a left and go down to the middle school or into high school, who we've received permission from to use the parking lots there. And then any parents that need to walk back will use the sidewalks to do that, clearly marked with basically everything that the town has done. So that's our spiel. That's what we'll be doing. We're trying to get businesses involved. A lot of local businesses are supporting us. Some will have, they're doing discounts on food and things like that, so we're really trying to encourage the, all the 1,500 to 2,000 people that would be there, we're trying to encourage them to go into the town and take a look at what Red Hook has to offer and really hopefully flood the businesses. Businesses will be, some of them are doing takeout trades, so when swimmers and families leave, they don't want to cook dinner, they can go and grab a takeout trade from the local business and then kind of... So we're trying to make it an all-inclusive and really highlight Red Hook.
Okay. Questions?
Quick question.
Yeah.
I remember the one from six or seven years ago.
Yep.
This one seems like it's bigger.
Teams have grown. So New Paltz is the biggest team in the league, and last year, they had 189 swimmers. Red Hook is currently, we were the second-largest team last year. We came in at 112. Right now, registration's still happening. We're at 127 swimmers and still registering. And then most of the other teams usually come in between 80 to 100. So the league, and last year was the Olympics. So it's always, anytime you have the Summer Olympics, swimming is the sport that people watch, and there seems to be a surge in this sport.
Other questions?
How many cars are you estimating to get?
We're asking people to carpool, ideally. So I would like to say between 300 to 400 is really what we're trying. It goes out, and the league as a whole encourages families to carpool. I know coaches, as coaches, we carpool. We try and do one car per team, so it's just really, you know, eight or 10 cars per team. And then, and same thing with families. Most families know the drill, because same thing, when it's in Ulster County as well, the Ulster County pool, there's limited parking there too, so everybody's encouraged to park or to carpool.
So are you going to have, since you're going to have volunteers at the entrance on the road?
Yes.
And then are you going to have the traffic pattern that you provided here signed?
Yep, so there'll be signs. There'll be where we're reserving the spots for the public, we'll take that off in the morning so they can't, so nobody can park in those spots. And then probably around, just because for the late comers, probably between 8:30 and 9:00, I'll have our parking attendants move it. But we'll probably have five or six other attendants throughout.
That area?
Yes, that area, because parents become quite aggressive in trying to get those front spots. So, you know, just making sure that traffic is moving and parents are exiting and going to the high school when they need, when there's no more parking left.
And did I hear you correctly, so that, well, there's, you said there were going to be team tents?
Yes.
But then when people get done watching, they often go to the team tents? So are the team tents supposed to be big enough for hundreds of people per team?
Yes, so each team gets their own tent. So each team selects a size depending on how big their tent is. I don't know if I have, I don't know if I printed that part off, but Cantini?
Cantelli.
Cantelli, thank you. Cantelli is the vendor that we're using.
So those will be professionally installed?
Yes, yes, yes. They come in Friday afternoon, they set them up, and then they'll come in Sunday and take them down.
So your signage will be sandwich boards?
We have sandwich boards, road cones, and then we have stakes to block off the grass area, so parents don't park in the grass area, and then caution tape.
Is the county going to allow you to put anything in the roadway?
That I don't know. That I would have to probably call the sheriffs. We had, we've contacted the sheriff's department because we were going to ask them to potentially direct traffic for us, but they, the way that it works is it has to be, what did they say, a full?
I actually met with one of the sergeants this morning, and Nick Herron here.
Yeah.
I'm on the board of directors for the pool. I met with one of the sheriff's sergeants today, and they have a very specific shift schedule on how they do that, and it's all based on seniority, so it's minimum four-hour blocks of four deputies at a time, which, being a nonprofit organization, could be very expensive. So a lot of our parents of swimmers are law enforcement officers, and they're stepping up to the plate to help direct traffic. The sheriff's, the sheriff's department is aware. The Red Hook Police Department is aware. And on top of that, I'm actually, I'm actually going to kind of float and help as needed, but we plan to put signage along Linden Avenue where the sidewalk is, so there's no parking there because that'll turn into an absolute mess. And then say, you know, additional parking at the school parking lot to try and circumvent that right out of the gate, basically from Park Avenue all the way to Red Hook. And does that answer?
So you'll have, when they're, assuming they're coming from 199, which is probably a safe assumption, right, because most of the people are coming from the bridge, you'll have at the school on the west side of Linden, you'll have a sign saying overflow parking or something like that?
Likely the east side of Linden as they come in, so that they see it on the way in.
With the arrows.
With an arrow, you know, to the bus garage, basically. And then we'll also, it'll be a two-sided sign, two arrows pointing that way. But at Park Avenue going down, you know, around the curve there, there'll be no parking whatsoever. And then, I think it was 40 spots, right, did you have 30 or 40 spots in the Red Hook will be taped off for the public for the Red Hook use?
Right.
And then we were hoping to occupy the stuff closest to the pool. There you go, that's the school parking lot.
I think we got one.
There you go, yep.
We had an image.
Yep. So the tents are going to be to the west of the tennis courts?
Right there, yeah.
Yeah, we have permission from the property owner there. So we thought the drop-off point would be basically where the sidewalk is leading to the tennis court, and they can walk between the fence to the pool and the fence to the tennis courts to their team tent. And that'll, and then the front area of the pool where the telephone pole is, if anybody's familiar, there's a telephone pole in a little bit circle there. We're going to keep that whole front section all open for emergency vehicle access, kind of forbid. Yeah, fire lane, there you go. So all of that access will be open for any emergency service vehicles that would need it, so should stay pretty free-flow.
I mean, it's mostly signage, I would think, that would be important here, signage and waving people on. What you don't want, obviously, is people to stop, roll down the window, ask where to go, because you don't have time for that.
Right.
And it's going to back up on the southern portion of Linden, which is a bit of a curve.
Yeah.
And just go over, you said that the majority in the morning was probably be in and be done by like 7:30?
Yeah, 6:30, because swimmers are in the pool at 7:30, so most families are going to be getting there probably 6:30, maybe slightly earlier if they want to try and grab the open spots that are there, but by 7:30.
And do people leave through the day, or do they pretend to stay all the way to the end?
Most families will leave, or no, most families will stay for the whole day because we have relays at the end, so that's when all age groups come together at the very end. I would say maybe 100 people will leave throughout the day if their child's not swimming at the end of the meet.
And you said the end is about 4:30?
Yes, yep. As long as there's no rain delays. If there's rain delays, then that would just push our timeline back depending on, we swim through the rain, if there's thunder, then it's a 30-minute block every time they hear thunder, lightning, we all go to our cars, and it's delayed until the storm passes through.
Or if you're past meet number.
Yeah, if we get through a certain event, through event 62, then we can stop the meet completely, and then we're done, and we declare it for whoever's winning at that point, which hopefully is us.
I'll just add something. Sorry. Keep in mind that all the overflow parking could technically leave through the Linden Avenue school and high school.
Right.
So really, the Linden Avenue traffic is really going to be the stuff that's parked at the Red Hook and the pool complex. So the gross majority of anybody leaving at that time, you know, they're all going to be nomading up the hill to their car, but then they'll likely just pull right out of the school parking lots onto 199, heading back to where they hail from.
Okay, thank you.
Are the guests aware of the distance between high school and the pool, just sort of knowing how far they're going to have to walk?
Yeah, yep. So we, on Thursday, we do a walkthrough with all of the team reps, so they come through. And then we have this posted on our website too, so that, so any parent knows, and it's also, there's also a DUSO website as well where all eight teams are on, so DUSO is also going to post this. I also have a meeting this coming Monday with all of the coaches in which I'll go over this with them as well, so they can be crystal clear to their parents to just keep moving, keep moving, don't argue with the parking attendants, please, and, you know, and that's why we have the drop-off, so they're not walking their eight-year-olds down the hill for how, you know, I don't know, four or five, maybe, and it's just one parent doing that.
Did you all happen to check with John to see if there's any other event or practice or game or anything on the northern side of the park? We probably would want to let, if there's some organized play, we would probably want to let them know it's going to look a little different than it normally does, and have them, maybe encourage them to come through the northern parking lot.
Yeah, I actually, I'm on a pretty consistent communication with John about all sorts of things I will mention to him. I actually suggested to Mary that perhaps we have him and maybe Pat Hillbrant and maybe somebody from the fire company just to come and meet us at the facility to see what's happening and like walk it so they can really, you know, be in tune. Haven't had that opportunity just yet, but now school's out, and we'll try to ramp that up just to make sure that everything's listed.
And are you going to do some notification of just the immediate neighbors that probably be?
Mailing, yeah. We're just going to mail out along Linden Avenue, especially the part across from the school and probably Park Avenue, just so they know what's going on that day. We had the mailing from the last meet that we did, so I'm just going to copy and paste it, change the date, and mail it right out.
And one of the conditions is you'll win.
We are trying. We're going to put it across the front of the team. Champions.
It's a number sport, so.
Yes.
New Paltz has a, they're a pretty big giant to take down, but.
To take.
Red Hook has been gaining, Mary's been the head coach for, this is her third year, and the team has almost doubled in size in three years, so we're.
We're trying.
We're trying.
All right, so a lot of deets, as the kids like to say, on communications, and we didn't discuss porta-potties. I mean, we have, but do you want to just talk about that because that's important? I think we don't, we want to make sure our subjects listen to that real well.
Yes.
You have arranged for... You have arranged for?
We have eight porta potties for swimmers and families. We have a trailer bathroom that has three stations, and that is for coaches, officials, and parent volunteers. That's how we, that's our bribery for parent volunteers, is that they get to use the nicer bathrooms. There's a wash station at the porta potty station with the eight, and then the pool facilities has two, four stalls total, two in the women's bathroom, two in the male bathroom, and that will just be for lifeguards and/or emergency, you know, any sort of emergency that could potentially happen, that the pool house will only be for safety staff. Everybody else is either using the trailer bathroom or the porta potty. And we're using Superior Sanitation, they're coming halfway through the day to do a clean-out, restock, anything that has to happen. And then, yeah, they're delivering Friday and picking up Sunday.
And for ADA, they'll use the facilities that are currently in the building?
Yep, so there's an ADA compliant bathroom right inside the fence of the pool, that anybody that needs that type of bathroom would be able to use.
Okay. Looks.
Do you have a sound system of any kind that you're going to be using?
We do. So we have a DJ that's coming that makes announcements. He'll be right inside the pool, and then he has speakers that go throughout where all the tents are, so any sort of announcements, any emergency announcements can be heard by the patrons that are in the tents. Then the pool has a separate sound system as well, and then the officials have their own sound system that has a buzzer, so you can hear any sort of announcements that have to happen there. So we have three means of communication, and then also we're providing walkie-talkies to officials, lifeguards, and the people running the event, so the Red Hook representatives that are running the event, so we can be in constant communication and not have to run from one place to another.
But, and your speakers will be pointed, like, towards your event to keep the sound?
Yep, so they'll be some pointed towards the pool, and then some pointed away towards the field where the swimmers will be.
The tent, the tent area.
The tent area, yes, sorry.
And that'll end at four, five o'clock, it's not?
Yeah.
Okay, you should probably mention that in your letter.
To the, oh, yes, yep.
And you're, I'm sorry if you mentioned this and I missed it. You have some people associated with the fire company, or EMS, or whatever, but are you going to have, like, an ambulance or a front car or something on the site, just in case?
We have asked. We haven't had much of a response, or a solid response, which is why we're trying to get a meeting with the fire company and the police department and John, so we can go over that and they can decide what they want to do. The fire department acknowledged that the event's happening.
Yeah, that's, yeah, but I, I mean, up to 2,000 people.
Yeah. We have, like, so we have lifeguards on staff. We have, the pool director is a lifeguard and a pool operator, the assistant pool director is also a lifeguard and pool director. So we do have the trained lifeguards on staff who are trained in first aid, and then.
Sure, sure. I'm thinking more of the spectators.
Yeah.
Like, for example, do you, do you guys have any ED?
Oh, yeah.
I mean, you do, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, because if it's, you know, hopefully it'll be this hot, but, you know.
We're retired EMS captain here.
Yeah.
Former EMT. There's actually less risk, it sounds crazy, other than like tripping in the grass?
Yeah.
In this event than there is at a regular, like, a, like a regular community day pool. There's only, there are only six swimmers in the water?
Yeah.
At any time. And then we're going to have an abundance of staff, lifeguard, trained first aid staff for anything that would pop up, you know, barring, you know, the only thing we wouldn't handle in-house is broken bones, but that'd be no different than if you tripped in your yard.
Yeah, yeah, for sure, for sure.
But as far as, like, any of the basic first aid stuff, we're going to have that well covered.
Okay. Anything else? All right, Deanna, which number resolution are we on?
Forty-two.
Forty-two. Approving the application for large assembly mass gathering for the Red Hook C graders. Chapter 44 of our code requires the gathering of the size to submit an application, we can review the measures that are being taken. The C graders, and I noticed that the application, at least the one I have on the screen, isn't yet signed by the representative owner, the Red Hook Pool, Inc.
I can sign that.
You can.
I'm a board member.
And I also sent one to Brandon with Rob.
Kanuski.
Kanuski, thank you.
Who's the president of the board.
Okay, fine. And just as long as we have that on file, so that's, that's the video. Okay. August 2nd, 2025, with a rain date of Sunday, August 3rd, 2025, same time, 6:00 AM to 6:00 PM. Subject to the conditions in the form of the application on file. Now, therefore, will be a result of the town board of the town Red Hook has followed, approves the application, subject to the conditions in the form of the application on file, and subject to the following addition, you know, conditions. Are there any additional conditions? No. I mean, I think it'd be great if, and I know that they're having a hard time with EMS services, but it'd be great if there could be either from retro patently, fly car, an ambulance just on site. Again, I'm not thinking necessarily just the swimmers, but just, you know, you've got a lot of vehicles, you've got a lot of people walking around, if that's possible.
Well, we'll definitely reach out to, and I'll, I'll actually carbon copy Brandon on that, so he can see that contact was made.
Asking for. The officers, employees, and agents of the town are hereby authorized and directed toward, and in the name of the half of the town, to do all acts and things as may be necessary, or in the opinion of the officer, employer, agent acting desirable and proper to effect the purposes of the foregoing resolution. I think what that means is if I get any phone calls, I might be calling you to say, hey, look, there's, you know, people are complaining their traffic's backed up, or whatever, they can't get by. So we might be in touch, I'll make myself available for the day. Okay, resolution shall take effect immediately. Who would like to move? Move it, move it. Okay, I'll do it. Second.
Wait for your log, second.
Further confirmation, folks, discussion about it. Good luck.
Thank you.
People in favor?
Aye.
Excellent, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
All right. We are moving right along, Rec Park Bridge to Cooking Ham. How old are you, horse? So, Brandy, what are we talking about, pre-development? You want to describe what?
Sure.
Do we have a map here?
I actually was just thinking, I did not send you a map of the location, I apologize for that.
For the folks at home, if you're familiar with the Cooking Ham Trail, there's a little offshoot that goes to our water treatment plant. About halfway up that gravel road is about where we're thinking it will, because of the banks, the bridge will be.
Right, right, exactly. From the Rec Park side, it's the third base line of the southernmost field, sort of a straight line out from there, so if you're looking at an aerial photo, you can use that as a reminder. And when we looked at this preliminarily, that location has a narrower stream width and is in a reasonably good spot for the trail network that's on the west side, at the Rec Park side, to create a connection point. So we looked at a couple of different factors there. So we need to proceed with a little bit of what we call pre-development, or pre-design services, to understand the existing condition in that space with some specificity. So the tasks that are proposed to be undertaken, which will inform the details of the design and actually help us select the type of bridge that would be appropriate there, will be first a wetland delineation. So we do know that there are some federal wetlands down in that area, but with the state having changed their regulations, we need to look at it for state wetlands as well. We are technically, if you look at the mapper, we are technically proposing the crossing north of where the DEC has mapped wetlands, but the new process requires you engage the DEC. And then we would also conduct a topographic and location survey, so for the bridge crossing, ultimately, what we need to be able to do is an analysis of how water passes through that stream channel and in the adjacent floodway, and we need to have detailed topography for that, both upstream and downstream of the bridge, so we have enough visibility into the geometry of the stream channel to understand how the water's going to move through there. That'll specifically inform the design of the bridge footings. And, and then the third item is to do a geotechnical investigation and evaluation of the set surface conditions where the bridge abutments, and we're proposing for a portion on the Cooking Ham side to do a raised boardwalk. So that will help us design the footings and foundations for the boardwalk section and the bridge section, and it's really critical information for the design. And that will involve having a drill rig that'll, we'll have to coordinate with the Rec Park, but out on both sides of the bridge, collecting a couple of bearings on either side. So that, that is it. Those three things will really help us be able to move forward with the preliminary layout of the bridge. We had done a concept plan last year prior to making some grant applications, but we need to refine that with some detail, and this will help inform that.
And will the pre-development stuff, can we use our grant monies towards this, or is it just for the design?
I have not seen the contract for that grant. I'm not 100% sure, but I can follow up with Ann and see what, what is eligible for coverage.
I haven't seen this.
Yeah. Do you want to describe the bridge for a minute, what we're thinking of?
Sure. In concept, what we're thinking of is a 10-foot-wide pedestrian bridge, so no motorized vehicles, but it would probably be sturdy enough to allow, say, a golf cart, you know, the Rec Park folks use golf carts and white deck mowers to maintain things, so we want, we wanted to be reasonable for them to cross. The trail network on the west side is higher than the trail network on the east side, where they would connect, and so we have to do a transition, a grade change. So we're looking at a prefabricated pedestrian bridge, and we've not selected any kind of design. We'll bring options to, I actually have a call with the prefab company tomorrow, so we'll bring those options to town with some pricing variation and some material selection. But that bridge will then transition to an elevated boardwalk that will ramp down. It will be ADA compliant, so it'll have to ramp down at less than 5%, and it'll have railings and tow guards on it. And then it will transition at the driveway into a stone dust path, so that it can tie in with the, with the Cooking Ham side of the trails.
And the material that the bridge will be made of?
We have not selected that yet. Common material options are wood or engineered wood, which are more like a plasticized wood, or aluminum. So there's a couple of different options and varying price points, and we're in the early stages of getting that information, so.
The aluminum would allow for water to pass over during a bad storm, though, right? If we got a?
So typically with the decking, the way the decking is spaced, it allows water to drain through. And the preliminary concept right now for the bridge abutment and the boardwalk is that the boardwalk and bridge abutments would be in the floodway and would allow water to pass beneath them at the flood elevation, again, while we need the survey, so we can see exactly what the height of that flood elevation is and how high the boardwalk's going to be.
What's the proximity to our water department facility?
The water, if I'm estimating, I have the numbers right in front of me, I want to say it's maybe 250 to 300 feet north.
Okay.
And that facility is enclosed with fencing. You know, we haven't talked about wayfinding or signage, but we would want to direct people, you know, to the Cooking Ham network and with some signage, and discourage people from going towards the water facility, or maybe say, you know, authorized personnel or something like that.
Question about the ADA design, we were talking at the beginning of the meeting about the ways that the Cooking Ham Trail are on the surface to be accessible. I don't actually know whether they're graded to be ADA compliant, but if we have a trail network that is not necessarily ADA compliant, then what's the reason to invest in an ADA bridge?
So, that's a good discussion to have. Right now, the trails on the west side in the Rec Park are ADA compliant. So, you know, if someone wanted to park on the Cooking Ham side and cross the bridge and come over to the Rec Park side, we'd want it to be ADA compliant.
We'll get to, you know, actually selecting the bridge. You'll give us information on useful life based on the different options.
Yes. Yeah. Bridges generally, though, we are generally designing them for 75 years, and so we're looking ahead. That's part of what our hydraulic analysis will be, will be to, like, look ahead at future flood events, because we, you don't want to have to replace a bridge in 20 years, you want, you want to have a lot of longevity.
Yeah, and then, interested to hear, you said, you know, how high does it have to be, and how high does the boardwalk have to be, because we know from previous rec department reports that there are often trees come down in the creek, and then there's, you know, flooding.
Yeah.
So we would want to not make the bridge be exacerbated there.
Right, absolutely, yeah. And sturdy enough to withstand.
The other thing, we don't want a bridge that's going up like 35 feet.
True, it's a balance, it's a balance, for sure. And, and, you know, it's something we have to look at, because of the grade change between the two banks, it's not, the creek is not in a cut bank where we just span across it, there's more of a flood plain on the east side.
Any other questions for Brandy on this one? We don't have a resolution, we just do this task order by motion to approve professional services engineering service contract for reconstruction services, T and B engineering and landscape architecture.
So moved.
Second.
The estimated cost or maximum cost would be $44,000, $13,000 per survey wetlands, $6,000, and a geotechnical investigation evaluation, $25,000. Okay, do we have a motion, a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. All right, moving right along. Community solar, spoke about that briefly. We had essentially two bids on this. Our community solar project, this is a little bit on the small side, so we didn't get as many bidders as we had hoped. They did come in within our budget, if you will, to make sure that this will be a financially viable project. And as a reminder to the folks at home, we received quite a bit of money from the Clean Energy Communities Program towards this project. For all the other projects that we've done, we are quite a few points. We are looking at $275,000 that we received in grant monies towards this. And so we need to keep it moving, there's a queue, and there's a process, at which point you need to continue down the line, get the project done. We want to have this project completed before the end of the year.
And the 200,000 is separate from the other money we got for the valuation piece, I've heard of the new debt section is?
No, that includes, that includes the.
So we've got a separate one for that.
The Caesar study, it was 100,000 and 175.
Oh, okay.
For the.
Yeah, the 100,000, that's what I was thinking of.
Caesar study, and then the interconnection for the folks at home. If you've heard me talk about this before, the financial viability oftentimes of solar projects relates to how much does it cost to connect to the grid, what does the utility require of you when you're connecting? This project, the interconnection costs were rather modest, which makes it work. The same is true of the one that we have on the Village Oil Field. And so we've got two bids that were submitted. And so we've got two bids that were submitted. We went out and did a rebid. As you know, it's an uncertain time. We did our first bid, and then there was all this talk of tariffs, and we've got people bidding conditional on tariffs, and of course, we can't do anything, or we can't respond to something like that. So Brandy, you want to let us know anything about these bids before we go ahead and hope for our...
Sure. So we provided a summary letter summarizing the bid and completing a bid evaluation. And as you said, there were two bids that were received. Both bidders had complete packets. The apparent low bidder is Harvest Power LLC at $1,816,320. It was compared to Renewa Energy, which was $2,328,603. We had contacted references, and we have reviewed the qualifications of the bidder and the bidder's packages, and we find that they are complete and in accordance with the bidding documents. Any award would be contingent on receiving an executed agreement with the selected bidder and appropriate insurances and bonds that are necessary for one would proceed.
Okay. Very good. And as a reminder to the folks at home, this would be our second community solar project. If you joined that original one back in 2019, you're probably feeling very lucky. You've heard me talk during budget season, the average house in Red Hook pays about $660 or so in town taxes. If you joined that project back in 2019 and you have an average usage in your home, you're probably saving that amount of money, perhaps even more than that, had you joined that, because that project was constructed when energy pricing was lower, and also there was a different valuation metric by NYSERTA. So what we want to do is take this time to just sort of manage expectations. You should expect, if you do join this community solar, to have some savings. Those savings will be more modest, you know, could be in the order of 10% off of what you're paying, which is typical for community solar projects throughout the Hudson Valley and New York State, but it's not going to be like that one that was constructed several years ago. So, okay. Any further questions? We'll have to get stuff from the folks at Harvest Power.
So depending on how the board decides this evening, what we would do is we would issue a notice of award to the apparent little bidder. With that, they have to send back to us their insurances and form of agreement. We would work with the town's attorney to make sure everything is on the open up and they meet all the town's procurement requirements. And then with that, we would follow up with a notice to proceed. That would actually allow them to commence the construction. The bid process did include an outlined schedule because of the requirements to be completed by the end of the year, so we need to, you know, revisit that with them. But I'd expect that they would get going on construction relatively quickly.
Yeah.
And they will provide a schedule, and we will share that schedule with you once we have it.
And it's to remind me that the deadline at the end of the year, is that for our grant funding?
No. So the deadline for the, it's not for the grant funding. It's because, as a reminder to the folks at home, what changed with the Inflation Reduction Act is that you can get, you, the municipality, can get the same tax credit benefits that, right, a private developer was getting. It's a direct payment. But the way you get it is at the conclusion of your year, when you file, you then get that 30%, or if you're doing an add, or what's called an add, or an extra 10%, you get that as well in the beginning of the ensuing year. So we don't want to have to wait a whole other year to get that in order to, so we want it up and running.
And we've had that there are delays in construction. Like what recourse do we have if it turns out that they are not able to complete?
So in the bid documents, to emphasize the importance of meeting the deadline, we included very high liquidated damages. And so there would have to be some very extraordinary, you know, force majeure condition that would keep them from being subject to high-level liquidated damages.
We have a resolution. Let's take a look at the resolution, shall we? Approve award for Cooking Ham community solar project pursuant to notice in public bids back in May 12. The size of the community solar array is 749 kilowatts, 1,000 kilowatts, enough to do perhaps about 90 households, ports of energy for the folks at home. It's located adjacent to the Cooking Ham Farm property west of Route 9. Specs were prepared by our engineer. Sig, seal bill, bids, excuse me, were opened and read on May 27. The bid of Harvest Power LLC in the amount of $1,816,000 for the project has been determined to be the lowest responsible bid. For such work is specified in the specifications on file with town clerk. The town board hereby authorizes supervisor or deputy, if unavailable, to accept the foregoing bid and execute a contract in such form as provided in the specifications. And I would just add maybe conditions that provided it meets all legal requirements, both on behalf of the municipality and on the solar developer, and that the information is provided in a timely manner so that we can continue with our New York sun, the NYSERTA program. And this is Resolution 43, Dana?
Yes.
Okay. Now that we have some sun, we would like to mow it.
I'd like to mow it.
Thank you, Jake.
I'll second that.
Thank you, William. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Very good. All right, we are moving. Maybe not right along, but we are moving. I don't know how this matrix is going to look, Brandy, but let's see.
Oh, it's so tiny. I'm so sorry.
It's pretty tiny, right?
Yeah, get your hands on it. Maybe we can zoom on one section at a time, because on what funding?
Well, we're there.
You want to discuss?
Well, something.
I mean, to be fair, we can test like 250 pages down into two 11 and 1/2 by 17 sheets, so there's only so much we can do to summarize the information the state puts out.
Okay.
I do apologize.
So, so the good news is they've consolidated. Several years ago, they did this. The bad news is then you have to sort of figure out which ones you want to apply for or do it all at the same time.
Correct.
And we are encouraged to submit several applications in certain programs and not in others. But as your memo to us said, there's less money than previously.
That's correct.
Set aside.
Yeah, so the summary that I've provided the board is derived from the application guidebook that the state puts out, which summarizes all the various programs across all the various agencies that are participating in consolidated funding. I have for you guys the six programs that seem most relevant to things that you're working on now. In some instances, there are programs that you have already been successful in funding. You know, Julia, for instance, I didn't include smart growth planning because you got a grant last year and, you know, you've got the comprehensive plan underway, so no need to look at that one again. When you get through comprehensive planning and need a zoning grant, you go back to that program, so we would put that back on the list. So, so there are a number of different programs to be highlighted. The ones I thought, and if you all are separately doing research and we want to kick around some of the options, that would be great. If a program only had like a million dollars statewide, I was like, eh, probably not a good, you know, opportunity for us. So we tried to look for projects that, or for grant funding opportunities that seemed modest to well-funded, that were open to municipalities in an area of interest for supporting improvements here in the town of Red Hook. So one that I had picked out was the Regional Council Capital Funds, which are funds that are eligible for both businesses and municipalities. And for municipalities is to make infrastructure upgrades to enhance business, business growth and development. That one has $60 million available statewide. I have a column on the far right side called match requirement, so that's just something for you guys to keep in mind when we put the applications together. We'll come back to you in a couple of weeks. And in the resolutions, we'll have put together an estimate of what the grant amount is and spell out what the town's match requirement would be so that you've got that for your planning purposes. There is another program under the Pro Housing Supply Fund program. This is again for infrastructure related to housing that is open to municipalities up to $100 million. The Office of Parks and Recreation has a trails program, so perhaps trail enhancements, trailheads, the Sockville Bridge crossing, we may want to pursue funds for that and let them know that some of the pre-design work is in progress there. The DEC's Water Quality Improvement Program, W-Equip, that is a very expansive program. There's $75 million available statewide. This is the program under which the town last year got a grant for the brine equipment. And the town is working through that grant application right now to get the brine system in place. But the one subset of this program that I thought was interesting was the Aquatic Habitat Restoration and the Aquatic Connectivity Program. So there's subprograms under W-Equip. Both of those have opportunities for culvert projects. And a number of years ago, the town had put together a culvert program. You are in progress right now, working with Hudson River estuaries on a couple of culverts, so that's, we could go back and we could look at the data in the culvert matrix and figure out if there's another one in the queue that's also go to aquatic connectivity candidate. There's the Climate Smart Communities Grant Program. This program is geared in two different arenas. One is to help you implement some of your climate smart communities goals that are maybe around energy use or energy efficiency. The other half of the program helps communities address problems associated with climate change. You have a number of neighborhoods in the town that have had flooding problems that are attributed to increased rainfall events. Forest Parks, one that we've looked at in detail, we've got all the preliminary engineering for that, so there may be a project that could be potentially funded out of that program for the town. And then lastly, I think you all have gotten a couple of these NYSERTA grants for clean energy and clean communities. I am less tied into your work on that, but the Energy Committee may raise that one for you.
Yep.
Well, okay, then the deadline is July 31st.
July 31st.
Deadline is July 31st. What would be ideal would be if you could, in the next week or two, let me know what applications you're interested in. In the past, what we've, we don't have any applications that I think are eligible for cloning, which is what we did last year. We had had some applications that were not successful in the prior year. We were able to clone and then modify and then make them successful in last year's funding round. So that's, that's great that we got those grants, but it doesn't leave us anything in the hopper from '24 to bring forward to '25. So we could sort of be starting from scratch again. But if I can know in the next week to two weeks, then we would work with you to pull the resolutions together, get the application content prepared, and put the budgets together and any of the sketch plans that are necessary.
Brandy, do you, in your analysis, do any of these seem like they would be a good fit for any aspects of the sewer expansion project, or?
So separately, outside of the CFA, unfortunately, on a different timeline, the state just last week put out the opening for the WEA program, so that's the Water Infrastructure Improvement Program. That is where we would look for sewer money.
So you don't need to kind of shoehorn the sewer into the...
I don't think so. Yeah, I don't think so. That one is due September 12th, so we have a little bit more time for that, but I think that's a strong candidate for the sewer.
It does look like the Pro Housing Supply Fund program includes some...
That's one of the ones I was figuring about.
It could, but where's your housing?
It's got to be connected to housing. Yeah, so...
What do you think if we're tapping in for the Cooking Ham for Plankton Expansion?
Or I think, you know, we've zoned for 200 units of housing on the east side of the TND.
That is true, also.
And that's not going to get built without adequate infrastructure.
Yeah, I think the, the thing for us to consider there is that with the sewer district creation, we did not include that parcel because there was no like imminent plan for redevelopment. So it is zoned, but it's not in the district. We would have to do an additional district there. So we could look at it and just see if that's a limitation, but I'd be happy to do that.
And what about trying to shoehorn it into one of the formerly EST grants? We have talked about trying to get some infrastructure for the hotel development that's being contemplated for that parcel?
Yeah, I mean, I think all of the TND is potential economic development, so that's why you decided you wanted to pursue sewer there, because we're finding that the, the vision for the TND could not be realized without sewer. So I think there is a good narrative to put together around that, so we could, we could look at that, absolutely.
The other thing is, on the clean energy stuff, so working with ROPCO, with Pro Housing, we got the $3.4 million for the infrastructure to bring the water and the sewer and whatever to the Cooking Ham project, and probably that'll assist with the Ross property next door and all of that. But we didn't get the funding for our shared geothermal for those projects. So I'm wondering, I'm wondering if we would have something that we could shoot for.
The geothermal?
On the...
Are they still wanting the geothermal, or have they moved on in their design?
No, no, no. We told them they had to do the shared geothermal. We wanted green development. And at the end of the day, that's, you know, the affordability part. I mean, obviously built to, you know, current specs, but...
Sure, but I didn't know if they're going to receive funds or something else. I didn't know. I did not realize that geothermal was required.
Yeah. So that's something we could look at. And so for the infrastructure for the hotel, then it'd be...
That was the, that, that one, I think, fit best under the Regional Council Capital Funds. That's formerly in our state development.
So what are we thinking for infrastructure? What, what are the application, what are the key?
It would, it may be something we would need to do jointly with the village to extend water.
Okay.
And sewer.
And sewer.
Yeah.
And if we did that, would that be for the benefit of a single property, or once those lines are run, would there be the opportunity for other properties to tap in along the lines?
Yeah, I think we want to look at it in terms of if that whole commercial district has the potential.
Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, we, we've already, you know, heard when we did the district formation in Hanaford that, you know, there, they would prefer to be on a municipal system. So you have an anchor entity there. So it would, it would really create opportunity, I think, for, even for the five old farm road property, the Ross's property there. I know that's a tight bid for them to achieve their development goals without sewer. Do you want me to look a little bit further into that and get back to you on that and see if we think the potential is good there?
Yeah. So a couple things. So a couple things, you said we couldn't clone. So you think salt shed is out for W-Equip?
The amount of money that the state is putting towards salt sheds is less than a million dollars statewide. Yeah, and last year their grants were like $100,000.
Yeah. Okay. I mean, we tried for the bridge before, right? On this, or, no, we tried on parks, we tried for RACCO, right?
Yes.
This one sounds like it could go with that.
Rails program, I think, is a good candidate for the Sock Hill Trail Link.
I think we should. I mean, if we let them know that we've got the railway ground.
Are we far enough along in design that we would be competitive for this grant this year, you think?
I need to have the conversation tomorrow with the pre-plant bridge person, but that was the reason we accepted the call was just to see what they could get us as far as like conceptual information and budget, because budget is really the thing that we need. So I'll have more information by the end of the week on that.
By the time they award, by the time they get the contract, you know, that's right, we'll, we'll be in a good position. What else, folks? Let's see, culvert, Forest Park.
Yeah, I think, I think I've had...
Battery storage?
Four people emailed me about climate smart communities in Forest Park. So I think we're all, we're all thinking that that may be a good candidate. The Highway Superintendent and her team are working on that first initial phase, but there is a much more extensive improvements through Forest Park that were originally proposed. And I think if we get too much bigger, it'd be a lot for Teresa and her team to fight off, so.
Sure, sure. Battery, sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry. Last year, if I recall, we created the district for the sewer. Was it a WEA grant or was it municipal, the intermunicipal?
It was an IMG. Yeah, because we did it jointly.
Yeah, and they, they nixed it, but can we do, can we apply again?
We absolutely can apply again.
And what's, that deadline, I recall, was much earlier last year.
Yeah, the, the state has had like one and a half funding rounds. So it's like on a non-even cycle. It's sort of been rolling through the year. So this year, it's September.
Okay, because last year was like June 14th or something.
Right, right. And they had had an early round like in February or something. So it's been very inconsistent. I'm not sure what's dragging their schedule there. But we have plenty of time to look at WEA. I can circulate this to you. I just printed it today before the meeting. But, you know, they have funding for both clean water projects, which are wastewater and wastewater treatment, as well as drinking water projects. So I think for sewer, we'd be focused on the, the clean water project. And I think also what you have this year to help support the WEA application is that you've just finished that drinking water source protection plan with the Health Department. That's a great box to be able to check. Like we have identified the aquifer as something we, is really essential for the surrounding community, the, both the village and the town, as well as bars, drinking water supply. And so the sewer helps us prevent septic contamination to that aquifer. And that is one of the things that's identified in that drinking water source protection plan that you prepared.
I mean, it'd be great if we could do the water.
Like extend water line?
Extend the water down there. I mean, even the neighborhood.
Yeah, that's true.
Probably.
Like all the way down to Hannaford Drive?
I mean, water extension, call it, to that Regional Council Capital?
Yeah, well, think about it, it's hotel, event space, housing, offices. But the folks at home, that property that was for sale for many years, that had, sold a few years ago to an entity that builds hotels, and that's their intention. It's been zoned for years for that type of use, for a conference center. Think about what we're not able to do now. Have a wedding, have a venue of certain sizes, do lodging of any significant amount. So that is being contemplated for that property. Obviously, we'd want to make sure the infrastructure is solid going up and down.
Yeah, I think we need to have a conversation with the village about capacity, make sure that they'd be willing to take on excess capacity. We can look at how far we would extend that water source down. And then it's fairly straightforward calculation to calculate the additional demand that would come out of that extension. We could put that information to the village's engineer. If they're fine with it, that would be, that would be the sort of critical path thing is we would need their, because they are the source of that water. We would need their pay that they could take on that additional...
So then would we fold in creation of the new well? So we put aside a little land for the village?
Yeah.
So they can do the new well there on Cooking Ham? So that could be sufficient water? Would we fold that into an application?
Oh.
And make it a joint application?
We're, we're thinking on the fly here, so don't pull me to anything we're discussing right now. Well, one thing that the village has had in their capital improvement plan and has talked with us about as far as a joint project is the valve system. It allows us to pump in two directions and share water more so than is, that we're able to now. They can send water to the town, but the town can't send water back to the village. So that may be something else to consider either under WEA or under, under WEA state funds.
Yeah, I would think with the hotel development, I think that it would be an attractive application for regional development.
It may make sense too to speak with the county about kind of what they're seeing on the south side of town, since they are running a small water system. I can never remember the name of that neighborhood.
Jefferson.
Jefferson, yeah. They've got that small water system there. It's not always ideal to have like a tiny, it becomes very cost prohibitive to only have 20 or 30 houses on a tiny water system, so.
Well, I know that they're not always happy with the quality also. And I hope we could take a look at that, see if...
And generally, your applications are stronger when there's multiple entities applying. It shows the shared services and collaboration and efficiencies, you know, from a lot of different standpoint. So good for the users, good for the communities.
Yeah.
Okay.
That sounds like enough to keep you busy.
Keep us all busy.
Do you have a level of clarity from us that you needed to explain?
No.
I have a little bit of clarity. I'm going to get back to you on that.
Absolutely not. But I do think, I think we all think that we should apply for the bridge though, right?
Yes.
Is that fair to say that that should be one of the applications? Okay. And then we'll look at what we can do at the Cooking Ham, look at what we can do at the proposed hotel site.
Well, I think I would, and maybe we're saying the same thing, but I think, I'm just thinking about the TND infrastructure generally. It's a part of the whole district.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Oh, yeah, absolutely.
So...
But the thing that will get their attention is that they'll be servicing the business district and this tourism as mentioned here. So again, they'll, they'll be interested in the hotel and the event space.
I'm just thinking timing wise. So typically, applications do include an authorizing resolution from this board. Are you anticipating having both of your July meetings?
We are certainly going to have two July meetings. We've got a lot to do in July.
Okay, okay.
We, we're going to have to reschedule the first one.
Okay.
We are. We're not going to have, not going to be able to do the eighth. So I'd like to ask you to take a look at the 15th for your first meeting. I'll do the 15th and the 23rd.
Okay. Yeah, so I would just want to make sure that we had applications far enough along and authorizing resolutions for you for that meeting on the 23rd so that we can include in the packet. And, and I have really appreciated the collaborative nature with which Red Hook does grants. If there is a board member that wants to be a champion, to like be a double set of eyes on the application or bring some specific information that we may not put into the application to bear, I welcome that sort of input from all of you.
I'm not going to be in town on the 23rd, just...
On the 23rd? For the 15th, everybody's good for the 15th?
Yeah.
Yes, July 15th.
Yep.
Okay, before I forget, I'd like to make a...
Check the town hall.
What's that?
Have to check the town hall availability. I don't have that calendar right here.
30 Tuesday, I think we'll be okay.
The tree committee meeting that night.
The tree committee?
Okay.
At 7:00.
That's my phase.
Yeah, not in here.
Yep.
Okay. Before I forget, I'd like to make a motion that we were scheduled to July 8 meeting, to July 13.
Sure.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and then we have something rather particular. Are we finished with, I think we finished discussing Red Hook?
We're good with grants at this point.
Yeah.
Yes, we'll go. We'll get started immediately.
Follow the vote?
Yes.
Okay. We'll, we'll work on those after meetings. Where are we? Last thing.
So I hope, yeah, okay.
Is this the one we want?
Yes, okay, that's what I brought also. So I was hoping it's the same. So this is a task order for design services related to repainting the town's water tank. So Dan Valentine has been working with the water board and paint painters for the last little while. They've been going back and forth actually for a couple of years, trying to decide like when is the right time to either replace the tank or repair and, and paint the tank. And it looks like the tank has got quite a bit of life left in it if it is painted. And so in doing that, what we would do is we would put together bidding documents to have a company come in and paint the tank. The tank has to go offline during painting. And so part of our design is to design an interim solution that will operate on temporary tankage with, throughout the period of time that the tank is offline. So it will be offline during the duration of the painting, and then there's an inspection period, and then there's a refill and disinfection period and testing. So it does take several weeks. And obviously, there's not a backup tank, so we need to have that temporary tank in place. So that's what this task order runs through, is the services for us to work with the, with the board to do, to do the preliminary work that's necessary, to put the specifications together. That's sampling the paint chips now, just to make sure that there's no hazardous materials associated with them, so that we can design properly. Putting together the specifications, preparing an opinion of probable construction cost. We have to do a design report, and that is so that we can do the permitting with the Health Department for this maintenance work on the tank. And then we would bid the project, as we've done with a number of projects with the town through our bidding website. We would coordinate the bidders and work with the town and the water board to make a recommendation on a qualified bidder. That's the summary version.
Correct. Design, permitting, and bidding. It has to be a cost 49,400. And just for clarification, it may sound technical, but it's not the town's water tank, it's the water district's water tank.
That is true. This is the water district.
These costs are assumed only by the users as opposed to the town.
That is correct, yes.
One small thing on page four, it's the spring and summer 2025. I assume that's 2026.
I apologize, yes.
No, it's okay, I just want to make sure that it's not happening. Yeah.
Like we're going back in time to do that work. No, that is my mistake. I can't believe we were talking about 2026, so that's my problem.
We're all learned to know, excuse me, this is just a motion?
Excuse me. I got a show straight here.
Okay. Do we have a resolution?
No, we don't.
Let's, let's see if we can bring Chris in. Online. Chris, are you there?
Yeah, I just wanted to point out for both you and Brandy that if the board is now moving in the direction of repainting instead of replacement, the board had previously authorized a bond resolution for replacement because it was a thought at the time that that was your path and you were looking for financing in that regard. So I would need to ask if they are filing another or different or amended IUP application for potential financing of this repainting project and if we need to prepare a financing resolution for that.
What's the timing on getting on the IUP for, for this project?
I do not know and would need to check. I don't believe painting is eligible under the IUP. It's not generally extraordinary enough cost to warrant the financing, but I will get back to you on that and confirm that.
Well, it's certainly going to be, I mean, it's still a significant amount of money, so. So you're going to need to finance it because I think you only have about a half a million dollars in your reserve for this project.
I'm not sure what the water budget is. Yeah, I apologize, it did not come with those numbers tonight.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, I know.
I just want to add that to the discussion about, you know, think about how you're going to finance this.
Yeah. Well, we have time. I mean, this is not proposed for 2025 at all, it's 2026.
I understand, but in terms of getting grant applications, in terms of, you know, if you were going to consider that, you know, I just want you to have it in mind.
Brandy, is there something you can think of that we could apply for a grant for that?
I'm not anticipating that. Again, painting tanks is generally not something that's...
But the repainting does, is considered to have a capital life. I mean, it's not like painting your, you know...
Yes. I will, I will talk with Dan Valentine about that, Chris, and I know he had put together an estimate of cost. There are some minor equipment upgrades that are also being proposed. And a mixer being added to the tank. So there is a, there are some proposed equipment upgrades. So I'll, I'll see if he thinks it crosses the line into getting into the IUP and then I'll, I'll double check what that timing would be.
And regardless of that, we should be thinking about getting the process going because that involves a public hearing, you know, and the procedures for adopting resolutions to approve that kind of financing is going to take some time.
Yeah, my concern, my concern is if we go out to bid and we get a bid that looks not great, is the water board going to go back and consider a replacement? No, Mr. Liaison says no.
No, my, you know, my participation in those board meetings, given the upgraded technology of the painting, they believe that the useful life of the tank, if it's done properly, it's much more worthwhile to do that, given what the range is compared to a replacement of a tank. A replacement of a tank, I mean, they think, according to people who know, the painting of a tank now, if it's done properly with the upgraded new paints, they can maybe squeeze 15 years even more out of it. So if you, if you estimate, say, minimum 10, a replacement of a tank right now is upwards of four and a half million. In 10 years, the way they're looking at it is in terms of financing over time, there's a finance person who's on our board. They're pretty, they feel pretty strongly that they really want to go with the repainting.
Yeah. Well, we've gotten 20 some odd years out of it.
30.
Almost 30, right?
Brandy, in your experience, or I don't know, Dan's experience, is there a sufficiently large pool of qualified bidders that we expect a competitive set of bids?
There is very specialized. It is very specialized that there are a number of different providers of those services in the area, yeah.
They do a lot of them expel. There's actually one here.
I will, I will follow up with you guys with some more details. We did just do a similar project up in the village of Belmont. I don't have those numbers at my fingertips because it wasn't my personal project, but Dan was the project manager there and he could tell you how many bids we had and what the range of bids were. And I believe it was pretty competitive and they were, they were happy with the work and it's just wrapping up now, actually.
And the village of, the village of Redham also just...
Yep, they just had their tanks redone.
Complete paint job.
That's correct.
Well, we have very specific specs on this, right? The paint.
The paint is a very, yeah, it's more of a coating than just like a, it's not like, you know, paint for your walls. It's very specific. And there's a lot of work... there, and there's a lot of work to like prep the surface of the tank beforehand, and sandblaste it, and make sure that you get really good adhesion, and that's the main thing that we're checking when we're, um, following up, is just to make sure like where the spray paint overlaps, that there's good adhesion there, and, um, so, um, you are right. It's, it's pretty technical in terms of.
Well, and I think, you know, from my observation of the work board meetings, with Dan Valentine present for one of them, was that when we had the company come and do the, uh, the scuba diver go into the tank, the concern initially was, what is the condition of the steel on the inside? And it was way better than they had anticipated.
Right.
So, you know, and that was sort of the tipping point in terms of, you know, how much more life, useful life, do you really think you can get out of this tank?
Right.
if you paint it, and they feel confident that this one's in great shape.
Yeah, good.
It won't be if we don't repaint it, but.
And I think the other thing that has come out of that is adding the mixer.
Yeah, the mixer.
Uh, because that tank is very tall and skinny, and it stratifies, and, and you get different quality water at different levels, and you want that to be more of a uniform quality, so, um, adding that too will be an improvement, more quality in the district.
Okay.
Do we need a motion on this?
Yeah, a motion to approve the task order twenty twenty-five dash
Oh, three.
Oh, three.
I'd like to make that one.
Moved by Deputy Supervisor Second.
I'll second.
Uh? Julia, further discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Brandy?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Frank.
You're welcome, glad to see you.
Safe, safe drive home.
Thank you very much.
Okay, we're gonna do a couple of appointments on, uh, re-or. We have one per Trails and one per CBA. Can we start with CBA? This should be in our package. Uh, we have a recommendation by the Chair of the ZBA to appoint Ross School, uh, has an extensive background workforce development, worked up in Albany, uh, oh, um.
Centennial.
Community outreach. A name, man, uh, paid.
Did you get page one up there?
Yeah, page one's up there. Yeah, yeah. So this is, let's look at our re-or page showing folks, this is for the spot that actually ends this year.
The vacant is this year.
And it is, it's the vacant one, right, which ends this year. This is the one, uh, John, uh, Coleman. Doctor Bonavita. Just resigned. So it's a short term, five-year appointment, five members, but we're gonna need it. I'd like to vote that we appoint Ross School to the Zoning Board of Appeals as recommended by the Chair for the term ending at the end of this year. Is there a second?
Well, second, definitely.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
We just voted, I mean, we heard nothing you said, we're trying to figure out, you just mumbled.
We just voted to appoint Ross School to the Zoning Board of Appeals as recommended by the Chair of the Zoning Board. There is a vacancy that was just created by the resignation of John Bonavita Goldman. We now have, um, we didn't appoint, let's see, for our Trails at a previous meeting, we forgot to do that, can we do that? There's a vacancy that is created by the resignation Melissa Cohen, I think, right? No. No, but I have, I have my, my packet here, um, Greenway and Trails. So Melissa Cohen was a twenty twenty-six term, two years, she resigned, and Betsy Brower is being recommended by Chair Lisa Wayland for Greenway and Trails Committee. Christine moves.
Second.
Jacob seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
I would recuse myself, as she is my mother.
You will be, you will, you will recuse your mother. We're being on the Trails Committee.
Second.
Uh, let's go on to.
We have some ethics board folks also, are we ready to?
We're not ready on that. We haven't had a discussion. Okay, uh, we're on resolution forty-four. We're discussing the website privacy policy. I have not been involved in this very much. Uh, Chris, could I ask you to unmute yourself? Or not? Okay, there you go. Yeah, do you wanna just, for background, just let folks know? Why, why?
So Ann, Ann brought forward, um, a change, uh, a, a, a proposed privacy policy that was based on, I gathered, a recommendation from, uh, their website provider, uh, for compliance with some changes to the general municipal law requiring certain governmental website upgrades, you know, one of which is that you need a dot gov, you know, website address now and so forth. Um, and so this is one of those changes that needs to happen. They apparently provided a model that was based on, uh, what Ann told me, uh, was based on what some other communities had done and that through, um, you know, the, the state RT requirements, and the, your website designer made some recommendations for this. Um, and so that's basically where this came from. Um, it is intended to disclose to the public what kind of data you're collecting and what you're gonna do with it, and, um, that's, you know, that's really the purpose of this. So, for example, if you've, you know, if you sign up for, uh, just to write up information from your website, you know, are there cookies in here and that sort, sort of thing? So this is your website designer explaining in, in what is supposed to be plain language, you know, how that works and what they're collecting.
Right. This is really for disclaimer purposes, right? We're not, we're not really adopting a policy as much as we are just putting out there what currently happens with this.
Are required to adopt a policy.
Right, right.
Right. Yes.
But the policy is basically recounting what's currently happening with our internet service, our website service provider.
Right, and how you're managing the data.
Yeah. I mean, it's pretty straightforward. You feel comfortable with the language, Chris?
Well, I talked to Ann about it, and she, she really is the one that spent the lion's share of the time working with her website provider. I mean, it really is a function of, you know, I asked some questions about what does the website actually do with this information? 'Cause of course I don't know, you know, so she's worked with them on this and feels comfortable that it reflects what they're actually doing.
Right. Any questions, folks?
Straightforward.
Pretty straightforward, it's a lot of disclosure stuff, which is always helpful.
And where will that show up on the website?
I think we'll have a link to it, right? We'll put a link right on the page, right, Chris?
Yeah, it, it, you'll see it on, on most websites, usually at the bottom of the page.
Yeah.
Along with some other things, other information that, you know, to help people, accessibility and that sort of thing.
Yeah. We're on forty-five? Forty-four?
Forty-four.
Forty-four. Um, adopted on June twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-five. Any questions or proposed changes in the language? No. Okay, uh, would like to move it?
So moved.
Thank you, Jacob. Who would like to second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Bill. Further discussion? If not, all in favor? Aye. All right, we talked about the police services agreement, uh, several months ago. We were concerned with the language that during court, that, you know, per the, their contract, uh, their CBA, there's a minimum amount of hours, which makes perfect sense if they come in and do a half shift or whatever. We had some changes to hourly rate, we had a conversation with the mayor about that. We felt strongly that it should be for the hours worked in our contract with the village. Sixty-five dollars an hour is all in and out of all of the benefits. We talked about maybe adjusting a hundred thousand dollars up slightly to a hundred and five to compensate for the difference between hours worked and minimum hours under their contract.
But that's not reflected here.
The only thing that's not reflected is the hundred and five, the sixty-five, the change to the sixty-five. Yeah. We have no control over whether it's overtime or not, so we don't have that in the contract. That would be scheduling as all the village. I'd like to propose that we make that change to a hundred and five thousand for the contract year. Any further discussion? So we'll make that change, we'll do a clean draft, send it to the village, and see what they think.
The four-hour minimum is a little longer included here, which is.
Right.
Yeah.
Uh, all in favor? Yeah, we like that?
Yeah.
Make a motion here? Uh, do we have a resolution? Yes, we do. Uh, forty-five, we'll pass it, hopefully the village will be okay with it now. Um, resolution forty-five, dated June twenty-five, on G twenty-five, police services agreement between the village of Redham and the town of Redham, this hereby approved. We move. Mr. Policeman?
I, I mean.
You move. Uh, second?
Second.
Thank you, Christine. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you very much. Uh, moving right along, oh, screw that. I think we're, we're getting there. Correspondence, we talked about community solar, and just to confuse the heck out of you, you all probably, if you joined, uh, or if you remember the Community Choice Aggregation, that's just the supply side of the energy. We had three contracts with energy suppliers. The third one is coming to a conclusion, and you'll see the last, uh, charges on your bill. You will be automatically, uh, put to Central Hudson, or you choose another ESCO. Uh, if you participated in this program, they give you some options. You can also go on, uh, Central Hudson's website. Um, if you'd like to look up a community solar project instead of waiting for ours, which, uh, won't be available for a while, and I should, uh, add, I don't think I mentioned, we, we've awarded the construction, there'll actually be a separate RFP for, uh, customer acquisition and management. Um, so members, uh, we'll start with our community, obviously. There will be a firm that will, uh, acquire those, the members, and then manage, uh, the billing and so on and so forth. That'll be a separate RFP coming out, maybe in a couple of months or so. Um, but for now, this is the Direct Energy Community Choice Aggregation. If you received it in the mail, if you received a check, by the way, a couple of, of months ago as part of a settlement with Columbia Utilities, in one of the contracts, it ended early because that energy service company could not, uh, meet, uh, the collateral by the, uh, by NISO, um, so that they didn't fulfill the three-year period. However, the savings that we did get in the one year and change was actually higher than we thought we would have for the entire three-year period. Um, but there was a check, fifty dollars per household, pretty much, um, that you would have received a couple of months ago, please go ahead and cash that, because it will no longer be good in about thirty days. And this is your opportunity to choose another ESCO, choose a different community solar, or wait, uh, till twenty twenty-six, in which case you may be able to participate in the cooking game. That's correspondence, and then let's go, uh, right into, uh, police reports, Bill, if you would.
Yeah, we have April and May, um, standard format. April, uh, RTO PB responded to a hundred and twenty-four calls, and, uh, as part of our contract, they issued thirty-two tickets, they didn't, uh, pay a lot of attention to speeding issues, and they made five arrests in April. Um, the report is self-explanatory by category. And as a reminder, the only thing that's, it's not misleading, it's just confusing, is the school resource officer. Every day that they have one there shows up as a, as a call or incident, so, um, and that's sort of how our
Okay.
Yeah, that's how they count their chickens.
That was the, the May report?
That was April.
Oh, that was April.
And then in May, um, as the weather gets nicer, there, sometimes we're outside, um, there's more things to do. Responded to a hundred and forty-six calls, uh, issued thirty-eight traffic tickets, summonses, and made three arrests. And the, uh, report again is in the same format, you know, by category, and I believe it's fairly self-explanatory.
Okay. Christine?
That's actually pretty short, recreation department, let's see, board. Mostly, as you might expect, it's very focused on, uh, getting things up and running, uh, for the summer camp program. Still going through various steps with the health department to file various paperwork, to have an inspection that's coming up. But, you know, we have our staffing in place. Registrations were held over the last two weekends, uh, and, uh, had some good, really good turnout for that. And also, besides that, still working to get, um, you know, the park fully open, um, you know, the restrooms just got opened. Uh, you know, materials are coming in for the fields, the ball fields, um, and for the playground, sandbox, et cetera. So just, uh, you know, that, all, try getting everything ready for the season.
Wow.
I told you, I told you.
It's like, uh, Brandy's Grant shirt.
Yeah, right.
So we did have, over the two weekends, we did have, and then a couple of stragglers.
Hundred the first one, so.
Yeah, we're over two hundred again.
Yeah.
Um, one of the things that we're most proud of here, you'll hear us talking about equity and access to, uh, public facilities. We're most proud of the fact that we offer a free summer camp for family. You heard me earlier, if you were You heard me earlier, if you were here, talk about the average household pays about six hundred and sixty dollars or so. I guess I should look up the exact number. And town taxes, if you have a family and, you know, you wanted to put your kid or kids into summer camp, you could see how the savings of having a free camp for five weeks can certainly more than offset that cost. It's very important to us that we continue this program, otherwise we'll really be a community of folks that, you know, can't can't survive without having to pay those summer expenses. Okay, next up. It's a long report. Water, water everywhere.
So there are, in this packet, there are two monthly, April and May monthly, water department, it's the the regular department operating meeting, as well as, shouldn't say draft, I think it was the approved final annual report for the water district at the water board itself, actually, approved, a little out of order. The monthly reports, I did not attend the April meeting, I did attend the May meeting. Their standard, it basically go through how much water is being pumped, you know, conditions of our wells, conditions of our water, which is always excellent, and then sort of ministerial issues like supplies that are needed, or filters, respond to complaints of dirty water or issues in the tank, the water tank itself. And in April, for the April meeting, there have been some leaks of water. There are parts of the water department that are pushing eighty years old, and things break. So, which is why we have a big reserve to help deal with that. And also, the other issue is that, because pipes get replaced, you know, plastic is a is a common, very sturdy, and generally lasts forever, but we've had earthquakes, we've had other things that happen geologically underground, and so sometimes those things, you can't see what happens underground. And they did have a couple of serious leaks that they've had to deal with over on Lending Acres Corner. But they've they've got that figured out and taken care of. The annual report is really about sort of issues the board have been dealing with, which we talked about before, whether to paint or replace the tank, gives the financial condition of the water department in terms of revenue, you know, total revenue and expenses, as well as what the reserve balances are for for repairs, as well as total reserves. Actually, you know, we've been doing a pretty good job in terms of what our revenue is versus our expenses. So every year, they bank about fifty grand into that reserve, so that won't get a big expense like we're making a tank. It will help take care of that. That's the income and revenue. If you scroll up, they have, they have the reserve balances and expenditure, I think. That's your operating expenses. And what they, and also things like, the tank communicates electronically with the department for certain things, and they are going to upgrade, they might not forbid, to a cellular system.
All right.
So that's part of the annual money that goes in reserve, and that's not a cheap, you know, endeavor to have that redone completely. It might be thirty-five thousand dollars or so. But it allows the water department to deal with things remotely in real time, as opposed to necessarily having to go to the tank or going down to the actual plant and dealing with things.
How are we doing on suggesting a backup generator? Were you making any progress there?
Well, I keep suggesting it, and I keep telling them there's grant money available.
Do we lump any of these things in to make the tank meeting a larger capital project?
Which is the.
Yeah, there are.
The generator?
Yeah.
The cellular communication, any of these?
Well, I don't think the cellular communication, I'm sure, I think those are, those are like supplies. The generator, yes.
That has a useful life.
Yeah, the generator, absolutely.
Against that, but.
I think part of the, I find the right word, part of the reasons that they haven't pushed hard to have a generator is the need, there are really two kinds of tanks. There's the kind that you see, that's like a big water tower with the, you know, and then there's the kind of tank we have, which is a long cylinder filled with water. And the location of the tank, based on the pressure of the water in the tank, provides water through the pressure itself. And so if power goes out, basically, where the water department, where the water is provided to those homes, those four hundred and ninety-eight homes, generally, there's sufficient pressure just from the water in the tank alone to provide water, maybe a slightly less pressure, for up like three days, three or four days.
Three and a half or four days.
Days, that's that's, yeah, that's it. Now, we have had, there have been a few instances.
Yeah, twelve, ten or twelve days one time.
I think the, there are other reasons to have a generator regardless of that, which has to do with our well pumps and other things, as well as we are the backup water for Bard College. We recently did have a situation over the summer, I mean, over the winter break in January, where we had to provide them water, and it was sort of what I would call a real-time test. And I think, you know, based on that, it would be prudent. But the generators that are needed for this kind of operation are large and expensive.
Yeah, but I mean, we got grants, right? We got the grants for this one here and the one.
It's like three times bigger than this.
And this?
Oh, they're huge, yes.
Well, we should definitely put it in that grant.
Yeah, I mean, I I've been, I've been suggesting that.
Surprised if it was that much good, whether the center had a bigger one.
It's a, it's a very big generator. So, and I mean, I've been a proponent of that, and I've been saying that we got grants for, you know, replace our generators here. I think that there's not full agreement on the water board itself about considering that they've generally been able to function with the pressure in the tank for most averages. But I think what happened in January, I think it might have changed their minds a little bit. But that's something to continue conversations with them. I don't know what.
Send us a meeting.
They meet quarterly, so they just have a meeting, but they will sometimes intermittent meetings as needed.
Well, the grant deadline's the end of July, so they might bring up what they have to.
Well, we just said the generator grant here earlier.
Oh, that's right.
I mean, maybe it was a ballpark idea of what it would be, but we'll have to go out to bid for that.
It's, I think the one thing that people don't realize is it's a particularly specific kind of industrial generator, which is not the kind of generator that you think of, like, well, we have here. It's industrial grade, and I think that they are considerably more expensive. And I think that's been one of the issues, is the concern about using money from our reserve to do that. But I have said, you know, you should apply for grants.
Well, now you can tell there's an opportunity coming right up.
Yeah.
I'll raise that.
I think they should hold it, and what about, you know, Hank is making noise again.
He's going to retire.
He's a spy ninety-four years old.
He turned ninety-four on Halloween.
Really, he turns on Halloween?
No, he'll be ninety-five on Halloween.
Wow. What are, what are we thinking? Is somebody going to step up on that for it?
There's one or two people. Timing is perhaps an issue.
Okay.
Based on their careers and what they do for.
Sometimes somebody has a plan for us, the timing of which we don't control, but yeah.
I mean, we're, we are blessed in many ways.
Jerry's the deputy and.
Jerry Goldman's the deputy, and.
Do we have a second deputy?
Well, we don't have a second deputy, but Greg.
Greg.
You know, and they, there, we, I've had conversations with the board in terms of succession planning on an emergency basis.
Right.
Because people get sick, things happen. And both Jerry and Greg said that, you know, when Hank first said he was going to retire, there was a discussion about it. And there's some basic ministerial things like signing bills, paying bills and doing things like that, that they, you know, they certainly know it well enough that they could come in and do paperwork and things like that.
Okay, well, as long as they're prepared to step in.
But I was going to say that we're blessed that we have a water department that.
Oh, my God.
Runs very well.
So much expertise on that.
Yeah, and and there's, and then even our operator, you know, it's an efficient plant. It's well taken care of. We have outstanding water. It's not the most technologically sophisticated operation, which makes it.
But sometimes that's better.
Yeah, in this case, it does make it better. And I think the biggest issue that they have really is that the water department was done in parts. So College Park was done first, and then Linden Acres. And based on how that ages out.
The district.
The district itself, how how those parts age out, there, you know, we're getting to the end of the useful life, certainly, you know, in places like College Park. And redoing your mains is not an expensive, you know, thing to do. And so that is the challenge for our water department, is that we do know, I mean, we have to deal with the tank, but we do know that as things are starting to break underground, we're starting to see leaks and other things, you know, at some point, there's going to have to be a significant infrastructure upgrade. It's just, it's the reality of of the nature of this business.
It might be easier and cheaper to just take a neighborhood and work on it.
Oh, I think, you know, that's.
As opposed to just mobilizing crews and so on and so.
No, I think that's been the, that's been the discussion. But on a day-to-day basis, you know, you get a leak, someone says, water's pooling in my yard.
Yeah.
You go out and find the leak. Sometimes it has nothing to do with our department, it has to do with the homeowner and their property, but we do have to respond.
During the reserves, we discussed about the reserves earlier, yeah.
Yeah, it's over nine hundred thousand dollars. But I mean, having a water department, and we have had discussions about having a second, you know, creating another district, a water district, you know, this kind of infrastructure is, you know, it's expensive and it's time-consuming, and it requires expertise. And, you know, in order, people without it, so.
Okay. Trees and water, water and trees.
Right, so, monthly report for the tree preservation commission for June. Just a few notes. First one, the homeowner at Aspen Wall has requested a tree, the site's going to be assessed for suitability, so look for that in future reports. The tree inventory projects team currently working in Red Park East, assessing existing trees, so species, size and health. And the next meeting, so for July, is going to be a business meeting and tree inventory work session at the Red Park. So we was talking before about them meeting over in the conference room, it's actually going to be at the Red Park, so it's not going to be a conflict here, but continuing the work on the inventory at the Red Park. This is actually a meeting in August. Thanks, and treat me for the work.
Jacob, we had Carrie Institute do that analysis for us on the spongy moth, whether or not it was going to collapse, or whether it was going to continue this year. Have we, is it too early in the season to see?
I don't know. It wasn't the last meeting, so I don't, I don't think it was, and there's nothing on your discussions, I don't know.
It was last year.
No.
They would be.
I feel like we'd see a lot more of them at this point.
It would, it would be her.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, you can see some, there are some caterpillars and there's some damage, but not.
No, I did one, and it's supposed to be a few-year cycle, yeah. And I think we had it for a few years.
Seven, right, seven years.
But I think there's like a peak of like two or three years that.
Right, but the report this spring said, we looked at both sides of Cookingham, and it was different, right, because all those oats and spongy moth likes the oats. Okay.
Can I just verbally update very quickly on the comprehensive plan committee, which has now met twice? So they met in May and they met yesterday. The first meeting was really sort of introductory, and what is a comprehensive plan, what's the scope of the project? And yesterday, we discussed plans for community engagement. Went well. Consultants are joining the steering committee for those meetings, and stay tuned.
Great. Do you, are you going to develop a timeline or something, something we can put on the website, people can take a look at?
Yeah, yeah, we've presented some preliminary stuff to the committee, and we can probably find a version of that in the future.
Okay, great. Was that it for reports?
From the highway.
Oh, highway, sorry. Jacob, please.
So a few notes from Teresa. So for the Soft Hill Bridge replacement, they're updating.
Different bridge, right? Just to clarify, it's a different bridge than we've been talking about tonight?
This is another bridge.
This is the one?
Yeah.
This is the road bridge, the one that we got.
Yes, yes, this is over on Aspen Wall, so this is, you know, sort of near ING.
Yeah.
So updated water line plan's been submitted to the water department by the contractor, HVA. They're waiting for response for schedule, test pits, survey markouts. Highway Department has uncovered a shut-off in Aspen Wall Road to facilitate the process. Overhead utility relocation agreements have been signed, they've been working on easements by ordering landowners. Project is expected to be off the bid by this fall, so I think that'll be really exciting to do, and we've been working on this for years at this point, so it's exciting to get this project along. Forest Park drainage, like we talked about before, highway department compared a couple approaches for cost-effective design. Construction is expected to begin when conditions are more optimal later in the summer. For the Brian grants, which we mentioned earlier, Teresa and the crew took a class on salt reduction, as required by the terms of the grants. Teresa and the foreman conducted a field visit to New York State Department of Transportation facility in Poughkeepsie to see, have an in-depth view of the Brian process from start to finish. Also, met with the vendors, discussed the equipment necessary to put a Brian application program in place. Preliminary estimates for mixing, storage and application process. Equipment's going to need to be housed in a shed, which is an inappropriate location currently in the highway grounds. I know before we talked about whether we can apply for a grant for a salt shed, it doesn't seem like maybe that makes sense with current grants that are available to us, but we'll need to figure a solution for that, for this Brianing equipment. Brand met with the vendor, discussed the operation, we'll wait for guidance on the next step. And then for the roll-out truck chassis and combination body bid that we talked about before, Chris has been, posed some of questions about the use of the contract for the purchase of the equipment. Those have been passed along to vendors, we're waiting on response. I think Teresa said we were anticipating having this on the agenda in August.
Oh, yes, yeah.
Yeah, so, thanks Teresa, Hyrum for all the work.
Thank you, Jacob. Yeah, we should expect that Aspen Wall Bridge, I think initially, we thought the construction would be later this year. It's looking more like it's going to be twenty-six. You know, the good news is we got more funding.
Yeah.
About two million dollars. We will get the initial bridge, New York grant, and then additional funding. Okay, do we have anything else?
Should we build in zoning? Or the ZVA thing is.
Who wants to do the ZVA bill? You want to do that?
Yeah.
I have to open the zone, you do not have one?
Excuse me?
Do you not have one?
Oh, no, I have that, this other one, it's stuck in.
Oh, it's not up there?
Okay. Something else.
Didn't make it? Okay.
But the building and zoning.
You want to do that one?
Yeah.
Okay.
For gin, which is not yet a work, it's a date. They've issued thirty-nine permits, they've conducted a hundred and twenty inspections, they've issued thirty-two either certificates of occupancy or certificates of completion. They've received two complaints and generated eleven thousand nine hundred and twenty-one dollars in revenue, generally from the permitting activities. One thing as a reminder for the public, the complaints, the building and zoning, zoning complaints can range from noise, they can, they can be all kinds of different things, dog-related, so, like a dog noise, you know, if the dog doesn't leave its property and it's just parking lot, they, our zoning department works with their dog control officers. So the complaints, I don't know what these two complaints are, but they aren't necessarily having to do with housing.
I was speaking to the folks of Tradition today, they're just a couple of lots away from the final cell of the hundred and two lots. I can't how many houses are not yet constructed, but it's not a lot. They expect to be wrapping up early part of next year, they'll be looking, I think, to put the pavement down, the final layer, they'll be looking to us to accept the roads at that point, so. All right, what else of ZVA? Who's doing that one?
Oh.
Well, we can do that one.
All right, I was there. ZVA only meets monthly, if they meet. Um, the ZVA only meets monthly, if they meet, I think they've met this year, uh, maybe twice, depending on applications. The report itself, there were several public hearings, as well as a couple of applications. Um, unfortunately, it didn't get into the pack at any time, but they've gone to...
She just gave it to us today?
Yeah, it just came in today. But it, you know, it basically would be the equivalent of like a planning board report of what applications are before the ZVA, what the status is of those applications. So, um, Kenny McMorelli had an application in for a zoning variance, Michael Wood had an application for a variance, and Jonathan Shapiro, um, who was being represented by Christina Disharm Architecture, had an application for a variance. Michael Lewis was not approved, and the other two are going to a public hearing. Uh, no, the one, uh, for Jonathan Shapiro was approved. I think, uh, Ken McMorelli's, is going to be in a public hearing this month, then coming up for the July, uh, July meeting. Okay.
Very good. Well, folks, that concludes, uh, our business for this evening. Before I entertain a motion to go on to a turning client, I'd like to wish you all a happy July fourth, and we will see you, uh, back here in the middle of the month, if not sooner. We have a special meeting for grants, which is also a possibility, we'll have to arrange that. We'll let you know, sign up for notifications to get all the information delivered to you. Thank you very much for joining us. At this time, I'd like to make a motion, we go on to a turning client.
Sorry.
Thank you, Jacob, all in favor?
Aye.
Good night, everyone, nice weekend.